This time will call us to order and we'll ask our clerk to establish a court.
Commissioner Blake Moore.
Present.
Commissioner Raskin.
Here.
Chairman Whitfield.
Here.
Commissioner Hart.
Here.
Commissioner Stoltz.
Present.
Thank you. All members are present in the agenda packet. We do have our minutes. Oh, excuse me. We need to approve our agenda first. I'm sorry. We need to approve our agenda that is presented here for July 14th, 2022. This is the agenda that was posted on the Facebook and website. Do we have any modifications to our agenda tonight? All right. Hearing none. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda.
A motion by Commissioner Hart. Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Commissioner Blake Moore. Any further discussion of the board on the agenda? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. The agenda is approved as presented. Okay, now to our minutes. Our minutes from our regular scheduled meeting here in Lafette on June the 23rd, 2022. Clerk has prepared these minutes. Is there any changes or modifications that need to be looked at on these minutes? Okay, hearing none from the board. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes as presented by the clerk?
Motion to approve.
A motion by Commissioner Stoltz. Do we have a second?
Second.
A second by Commissioner Hart. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. The minutes are approved as presented. Okay, at this time, we do have for our public comment, we do ask everyone to limit their time to five minutes. We do ask you to state your name as you come forward to speak before the board. And we ask you that you address the board for any questions, concerns, or comments that you have. So who would like to be first tonight? Okay, Mr. Pope, please come up, sir. Please state your name, sir.
Jim Pope. Hey, Mark, I'm still a little bit confused and maybe you can help.
I'd love to try.
Okay. Now, what I'm confused on is whether y'all actually have governing authority on this particular issue of overruling our chairperson with a county manager. For the county manager to do day-to-day supervision of county business. Okay. This law has vested a lot of executive jurisdiction for this board here. Invested 18 items here.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Read number 13.
Number 13.
You want me to read it? I'll be glad to.
Okay.
To enact any ordinance or other legislation which the county may be given authority to enact. This is legislation that was in place when this board was adopted. It's legislation that's still in place. And this gives the board, if you go back up to the top, we have the, are vested with the reserve to this exclusive jurisdiction to have that power. So that would be one thing I want you to look at right off the bat, is it's in this document that you're questioning whether we have that authority. We do have the authority and it states it right there listed under one of the specific items. That's our job.
Yeah. But where I'm having trouble understanding, go back up here to the last sentence before it gives y'all exclusive jurisdiction. It says, "As except as otherwise provided in this act, the following powers are vested in the board and reserved to its exclusive jurisdiction."
The following.
Now, can you explain what that means?
I'm not an attorney. I can't explain any of it to you other than what I've actually researched myself. But what I can tell you is that the document that you have and that I have here, and it does, it lists, it's got duties and powers to the chairperson, and then it also does list out specifically, and then it also states that any other duties or things that the board would see necessary, we can assign those to our chairman as long as they're within the law, the laws of the state of Georgia. And it states that very clearly in here as well. But I can't decipher the legal terminology there, but I can just tell you that, just like it's, if you want to start with number one, to levy taxes, that's the board function. To make appropriations, appropriation, that means, is this the same as allocate? That means that we put the money, we can require money to be spent. So all of these things here, including number 13, which is to enact any ordinance or other legislation which the county may be given authority to enact, and we were given that authority by legislator in, I think, did you say 1974, when it was first?
Something like that.
Yes, sir.
Now, can you explain it in plain English? You say you're not an attorney, but just in plain English.
What is you not understand, Mr. Jim? What part are you not understanding?
Except as otherwise provided in this act. You have nothing down here. If all of this was provided elsewhere due to that exception clause, would you agree with that or disagree?
I agree that this document that you have, the Enabling Act, states specifically, it calls out certain specifics. Then, and then it's very broad because it'll tell you that there, like I said, that it's not limited to. These are specifics that were drawn out when the Enabling Act was put together by our legislators and community members when they put this together. That's what I can tell you, is that all I'm working off of is the document that I was provided before I ever put my name on the ballot. That's what I can tell you, Mr. Pope. Now, as far as giving you a legal explanation, I can't. However, David Gottlieb, our county attorney, if he feels comfortable addressing that now, it's fine. And if not, then I'd like to ask you to research that so that we can have an answer for, Mr. Jim.
Well, I'd like to try to address the particular question if I understand it, Mr. Pope. And if the board will allow me, because the time has expired. But I know you come each month and every meeting, and I appreciate that. And I want to try to address what I think you're focusing on if I understand it. I think your question is in regard to the county manager. Is that correct? And does the board have the authority to appoint a county manager? And if so, what is their authority? Have I sort of identified your issue for you?
That's right. If you're counting on putting the county manager above the chairperson in supervision. Now, I would agree, you can hire a county manager if you put him under the supervision of the chairperson. That's where I'm having trouble understanding if y'all even have governing authority on this particular issue to put him above the county manager. But my time is up, so.
Well, we'll get some more information.
Why don't we just continue this next meeting?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Be glad to. Thank you, Mr. Jim.
Thank you, Brother Mark.
Appreciate it.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Pope. Who would like to be next?
I'd be glad to, Mr. Pope.
Okay, Ja, come on.
Come on, Mr. Pope.
Come on, Ja.
Thank you. John Coffey, we're chairman of the Walker County Historical Preservation Commission. In the last couple of weeks, the commission toured the courthouse, with the exception of myself. I had a senior moment, put down the wrong date, but you'll understand one of these days. And I'm going to ask our vice chairman, Allen Slaven, to give an overview of that tour. And by the way, for your information, the Walker County courthouse is one of the 18 sites in Walker County listed on the National Register of Historic Places. So it is a historical asset for the citizens of Walker County. Allen?
Thank you, John.
Yes, sir.
As John said, I'm Allen Slaven, vice chairman. And I want to take this time and say it's an honor and a privilege to be here this afternoon. And it was an honor to take a tour of our county building, such an honor. It was built in 1917. Now, can you imagine if just walking in that building, my memory can just imagine what it was like in 1917? That was during the war, War I, and all this turmoil, this beautiful building was erected. And it has served our community for so many years. And as we toured the building, there were some things that we felt like that, you know, maybe needed to have some attention to it. And it just, I want to say, give special thanks to Stacy Higdon. He took us through. He'd been, I think he said he worked 23 years. And he is very knowledgeable, had very great understanding. And I want to give thanks to Cheryl Steve Wilson to arrange and everything. And he was there. And of course, Brian Hart, he was there with us and went with us through the tour. And so it was a great evening. I'll be honest with you, I wish everybody could take a tour of our courthouse, because the works in it is just magnificent. I don't want to take too much time, but I get caught up on the preservation because our heritage is so important to us. But anyway, some of the concerns that we were just kind of looking at is, you know, some things maybe need updated, like, you know, maybe some of the wallpaper and maybe some of the plaster. And of course, I recognize that there's issues that's ongoing that's creating these. But this beautiful structure, if not properly maintained, will lead to greater and more costly expenses as it goes on throughout the time period. If you've got a house, a home, a car, if you don't keep the repairs up, it's going to deteriorate. Even our own bodies, if we don't take care of our bodies, it will deteriorate as the medical professional understands that greatly.
Yes, sir.
But anyway, I want to express my concern for this important anchor of our county and who work in and visit, vote, and make sure that in a courtroom have a safe environment and a health and safety concern. And I want to express also that we consistently encourage new business and tourists to visit our county so it may bring revenue to our county. Our courthouse should be the shining star to set the pride and standard for our county. What they have recently seen, you know, I understand that's an ongoing effort, is the steps during the accident that needs to be repaired. But we want to make sure that when we have visitors, when they walk through or come by the courthouse, they want to, we want to be proud of what they see. We want to be proud that when they leave our state or our county, they can go by wherever they're from and express what a beautiful place Walker County is. But with the commission of the historical preservation, as not only for the restoration and repair of the beautiful building, but the health and safety of the future, we ask the county commissioners to take these concerns and develop a plan of action to correct and repair these that are currently in need. Just observed, once again, thank you commissioners for allowing the Walker County Historical Commission to bring these concerns to your kitchen. And we ask and we hope that the court judges will work with you closely. Thanks for your time and for your attention. Thank you.
I have a question pertaining to that. So do we, I know at one point in time, I think we've discussed it, but I wanted to clarify. Have we gotten some estimates on some of this repair work? I know the roof was leaking and causing some of the plaster at once. I know we've done some repair work, I do know that. But do we have legitimate estimates to look at on this, on the major repair work that needs to be done there, i.e. getting the building intact as far as to get the roof on it and getting it in the drive where we're not deteriorating any further?
We got an estimate about a year ago when we started working on that project. We had a lot of logistic challenges. And so getting the Annex II building opened, should be open in a few weeks. That will allow court to be able to be held in the Annex II, and we can start relieving that space over there so we can get in there and work. When we go in and set up three levels of scaffold, you know, just the logistics, when we have to go in there and tear it down if they have to have a hearing, creates, you know, some challenges. And so we would need to go back and.
Rebid.
Rebid, get new information. Also, too, like the front steps need to be demoed and replaced.
And then when that's, and that's a safe, that's kind of a safety.
So those front steps have been closed.
Right.
And so, but we can't be jackhammering when, you know, they've got court and things. And so that's why we need to be able to relieve court out of that building where they can be across the street. So we can then take our team and what contractors we need to start the repairs. Because in the splash budget that we had, we had, the citizens voted, I think there's about $4 million allocated for building improvements. In the courthouse, we specifically listed that as a key project.
Well, you've answered my question then. That's what I was going with it, is we need to, we want to move forward then with getting those, some updated, I guess you would call them, updated quotes from several different, you know, probably need three quotes. And then, of course, we would want to look at it from the board to go ahead and just make an appropriation to make that happen. And we can do that through our authorities. That's what we'd like to see done. So hopefully, let's see if we can get started on that, maybe have something to look at next meeting possibly, or within 30 days. We need to move on that. I agree 100% with the Historic Preservation Committee and also the employees. We've kind of, we've had to put it on the back burner for a little while, but it's time to bring it back to the front.
Just by shorthand, I know there's a good number of you here from the Preservation Commission. Just raise a hand if you're on the Preservation Commission. All right. So we got four of you here. So thank you all for serving. I know this is.
Five here.
Five here. I'm sorry. I didn't want to miss anybody. There's five here. But this is a commission that the Board of Commissioners about a year ago got restarted, been dormant for many, many years. And so thank you all for the work that you're doing. I know you all have done a good job of going around to all the historical sites and going to community to community and opening your meetings to the public. So thank you all. You all have been super engaged, and we really appreciate you all's service.
I appreciate y'all.
Thank you.
One question, Shannon. So, go ahead.
Go ahead. I'm sorry.
You mentioned the $4 million. Is that, as on the splash, is that for the courthouse or is that building improvements?
Building improvements as a whole. But the courthouse was specifically listed as a focus.
Is there something that breaks out? How much of that $4 million goes to the courthouse?
That would be up to this board.
That's up to the board. We did all the appropriations.
Yeah. It was just a block number to be determined as we move forward.
All right. Thank you.
I also have a question. Allen, just a question for you. And I'm not trying to pin you down as a structural engineer or anything, but you did do the tour. You're a great observer. If you had to say on a scale of 1 to 10, if 1 is just superior, it's perfect, it's in wonderful shape, 10 is the worst shape, what number would you put on that courthouse between 1 and 10?
7.
Okay. Okay.
With you.
And I was telling Randy Pittman, the courthouse holds a special place for me. My great-grandfather and his son was on the construction crew that built that building.
Really?
Yes. They sure were. So it's a special place for me.
Very good.
The structure and the interior is just amazing.
Yet appears to be very structurally sound. It's just more to. Very good. Okay. Who would like to be next? Okay, please come up.
Good evening, chairman and commissioners.
Please finish your name.
Oh, I'm sorry. Erin Reichbauer. I would like to bring up the case in Rossville, Georgia, with the animal neglect and cruelty. I spoke with Mr. Whitfield on the phone and text messaging and just trying to figure out what went so horribly wrong there. There are two years of complaints on this property with neighbors calling in, the county, I guess they were calling the city too, because they didn't know which direction to go. And as Shannon, you witnessed, that was a pretty horrific scene there. And I'm just trying to figure out, how did that happen? I've reached out to you a lot of times saying, "Let me help. Let me do something. Guide me. Show me the way. Work with me." But yet, all the people in that community have been reaching out for two years. I'm just, I'm at a loss to, I don't understand. I just, I don't get how this can happen in this county.
Well, I think several things. Number one, the neighbors around there have been incredible because they have notified and placed calls, which allowed Animal Control to remove a lot of different species of animals over a period of time. But the neighbors were also shocked that there was even any animals in the house at all. When they saw both living and non-living animals coming out of that house, they were all telling me, when I was there, they were shocked. They had no idea there was any animals there at all. They thought Animal Control had removed all of the animals out of that property. The code enforcement director had been working with them and our volunteer organization, P-52, had gone over there and had removed a construction dumpster load of debris, garbage, things just out of the driveway and the carport.
Right.
Trying to assist them.
And they, the volunteers also removed a dog who was bleeding from everywhere. And I don't know how that was not reported to Animal Control, but that was a big sign right there. And just the outside of the property was a big sign. You had people squatting there, not you, I'm sorry, but people were squatting there for two years. And that place, without a doubt, constituted being condemned. And I spoke with the VA a couple of weeks ago, and the VA told me that if they, if the county deemed that property to be destroyed, then they had every right to do so. I also emailed the county about, gave them the information, who to contact through the VA, who owns the property now, which the property was, what do you call it? The property went into foreclosure in May of 2022. So this property report that I have here, and 30, I mean, 32 pages of complaints on this property, will this ever happen again in this county?
Well, it's probably happening today somewhere, to be candid about it.
But with 32 pages of complaints?
But we can only remove animals that we have knowledge of and they consent to without taking them to court. But they were surrendering animals most of the time without any hesitation or argument. I know county attorney, Mr. Gottlieb, had reached out to the VA as well. Did you get your thoughts about it?
As you can imagine, it's tremendous bureaucracy. And I did follow up, and I did speak with the person in your email.
Okay.
That you had sent. However, when I spoke with him, he indicated that that property has been transferred, once the foreclosure happened, to another entity. And I said, "Well, can you provide me with a contact name and information of that person?" It wasn't the same person you were talking to.
Oh, okay.
Okay? Because I talked to that very person.
Okay.
Okay? So it's, I want to say it's the initials, like R-E-M, you know, some abbreviation.
Correct.
And so I said, "To expedite the procedure," because I understand the property has been foreclosed upon. And I also followed up with a real estate agent who's been assigned to that property. And I got a response from the gentleman that you spoke with that said, "Unfortunately, I do not have a contact person at this subsequent entity. You'll have to just sort of start from ground zero." So we are in the process of trying to work with that person. The primary problem here is that the property is owned, okay? It's not like it's abandoned, people have left it. It's not that the property is what we call such a stage of dereliction that it is collapsing in. Now, when it's in that situation, collapsing in and has been abandoned, then the county does have an ordinance that permits us to go in, file, you have to file a legal action. You cannot just go onto private property and without a court order.
Right.
And send it condemned. You have to go through the process. So the court here is that as disgusting as the interior of that was, and I did not go, but as I understand it to be, the structure was, is not, I mean, it is fundamentally sound. And it's up to the, this separate agency who works with the Veterans Administration to now work with the real estate agent to get that on the market and to sell. Because I asked the real estate agent, "Are you actively promoting that?" And they're waiting for this second entity as well.
Right.
So we are working on it.
Right.
And I did follow up on your, and I appreciate your having made the initial contact with the Veterans Administration.
Right. Thank you.
Sure.
I would just like to see, I've already reached out to investors. So as soon as this property is on MLS, I have people that are interested in the property. So hopefully, that'll take place and that community can get back to normal again. And I appreciate all your time today.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
If you would like to contact them, I can provide you with real estate agents.
I have all that.
Phone number.
Yes, I have that.
Anything I can do to help facilitate that, happy to do it. I'm sure she would like to sell the property for a commission purpose.
Oh, yeah.
And we would like to see the property returned to a good useful purpose.
I have pictures of how the property looked before the owners passed away, because the owners of that property passed away and night and day. And I just look forward to, again, Shannon, I really want to help. You know, I'm not out to attack anybody. I really want to help in any way I can with this animal situation. And I applaud what your shelter is doing now. They're doing a much better job.
Thank you for speaking, Hannah. Thank you for your comments. Okay, who would like to be next? Yes.
I want to touch a little bit on that issue as well, but I wanted to let you all know, tonight on Channel 3 News, there was a story that was good for Walker County as well as another county. And it was an animal cruelty case. It happened in Murray County. And they seized the dog, which is what we'll talk about in a minute, because I don't think that you understand that when you say that if they won't sign them over, you can seize a dog. They seized the dog. It was starved almost to death. The person was arrested by the city. The city worked with the county and the county animal control. They got it that night to an emergency vet. They reached out to me, and I've been fostering it since before Mother's Day. It's healthy now. And as soon as it was released, because there is a process when it's a court case, before it's released, and technically no longer his dog, but it was seized and removed because it was being treated cruelly and abused. Warrior Freedom Dogs, that is located here in Walker County, came out and assessed that dog and sheep. came out and assessed that dog and she passed with flying colors. And she is about to become a service dog for a disabled veteran there in Walker County. We've been getting her back to health here in Walker County. And it couldn't be a better ending for the dog. She was saved, she was healed. The city law enforcement worked with the county animal shelter, who went to the same vet, incidentally, that we use. My kids have paws. Saw the dog, kept it overnight on fluids, trying to save its life because it was so emaciated. And she weighs 55 pounds now. She's just an excellent dog. And, and the success out of that is that now she's going to help a veteran. So that was a great thing. And it's an example of when everybody will work together. And I'm going to continue to beg for that, why we can't work together. And it goes back to the city of Rossville case. They were trying to seize the dog, but the county wouldn't take the dog. And they had no place for the dog to go. And it was no different than the cruelty case that just went, I mean, like that. It, everybody worked together and stepped in on this situation for this dog. And on the residents that she's referring to, I have the text messages from two years ago that I made a report, a cruelty report about that property. And I have the text message that says, technically, she says, it's her boyfriend's dog, so there's nothing we can do. All of the calls about the state that those animals were in, you can seize the animals. They do not have to sign them over. Because those people weren't going to sign them over and willingly let you come in their house and see what was happening, that there were skeletons of animals and animals were dead. That's why you must work with law enforcement and animal control. Go in and seize the dog. Our district attorney will walk them through how to do it. It needs to be done because I personally saw it and reported it two years ago. And I was told nothing could be done because technically, it was her boyfriend's dogs. The law says it's whoever has custody and control, period. They could have been seized then, something could have been done. And it's not difficult to get a warrant, especially with thirty-two pages of calls about animals that are suffering and for it. And I'm ashamed that it made the news like it did. And it was such a heinous situation. Because animals were in cages, watching each other die and decompose, and smelling it was no way to escape those cages. And we could have done something about that. Our county could have two years ago, when the first ones came in. So if you're not familiar with what's required to seize an animal in a cruelty case, please look into it. And please, send our animal control officers to the training that our district attorney set up. It's still happening statewide, but it's also online. So the training can be achieved. Even though no one showed up in Walker County when it was here, they can still go to that training and understand how to do it. Instead of, no, she says it's her boyfriend's dog, can't do anything about it. And two years later, we have skeletons of animals and decomposing animals. And on, I had asked my commissioner, and I would like to follow up with that also, to see if you have found out about a Plan B for the Rossville situation. Initially, it was that the shelter was full. Now I've been told by the interim director that they didn't ask properly for him to intervene and take the dog. What is the Plan B if the answer was the shelter is full? What is our shelter's Plan B? Because you just had a Plan B for this case. Immediately, they responded and got a hold of rescues to take the animals.
Well, in the case of Rossville jurisdiction and the city of Rossville, that animal needed to go to veterinarian, not a shelter anywhere. So it needed to go to a vet.
Every animal that you just took from that residence, excuse me, from that residence immediately went to a vet through a rescue. Our director, pardon. But they're paying the same taxes for our shelter.
That is city's jurisdiction.
Yeah, well, okay, wait. City's jurisdiction means what when it comes to animals?
That if there's an animal that needs to go to veterinarian, then the city needs to be responsible for that.
Where is that written?
It's their jurisdiction, it's their situation, it's their case.
It's their case to prosecute. No, because you let her go a long time when she was asking and answering questions. It's their criminal case, but we only have one shelter. So the animal control picks the dog up and just like she just did with this case, she contacts rescues to get him into an emergency vet. That's how it works. That's what was just featured on the news where the city of Chatsworth worked with their only shelter, which is the county shelter. They're charging him, he's been arrested. The shelter took care of getting him to a vet, to a rescue, and ultimately in court, they'll be reimbursed for those fees. But our county, we need to know what to do in those situations. Because the cities do not have animal control. But they, including the law enforcement, are paying taxes for our shelter. And our shelter clearly knows how to handle a cruelty case.
The city does have animal control in Rossville, and they have a veterinarian office in their city.
They don't have animal control. They have one officer who is willing to transport the dogs to the shelter.
That is their animal control.
That.
Hang on just a second, Bo.
Thank you.
County attorney, we, the board, can enter into a contract with any city and the county that is willing for our animal control to service their city, correct?
We can enter into intergovernmental agreements with the city to provide services. Typically, the, if, for example, the county is providing the services, then the city would have some payment arrangement to the county because the county is using its services, its personnel, its labor to provide services within the city. So the short answer is, yes, we can. And we'll take a mutual agreement with the city along with an agreement as to all of the terms, including reimbursement for expenses. But yes, conceptually, what you said, can be done, yes.
And city residents are paying county taxes, right?
Yes.
City residents do pay county taxes, but it sort of is like this. If you live inside the city limits, I'm trying to think of a good example here. The city of Lafayette provides garbage service, okay? So that's an additional service. The city of Rossville does have animal control, whether it's one person or however many. That's their choice for how they staff their department. You know, I've never inquired as to how or they decide to staff. I mean, I know it's a small town and there are services that they could, you know, get out of, for example, fire services. If they decided that they wanted to get out of the fire business, they could enter into an agreement with Walker County. But they would have to reimburse the county for those expenses. Yes, you do pay, a resident of Rossville pays some county taxes. I don't think they pay as much in county taxes as people who don't live inside the city limits. Are y'all familiar with that, Shannon? I'm not, I mean, do they pay the same amount in county taxes and then they pay this?
It's a different village, but I forget.
Yeah, it's a different village, I think.
But it really comes down to jurisdiction, just like we did with the city of Lookout Mountain, a meeting or two back where we entered into an intergovernmental agreement to provide a service for them based off of our county fee structure. So that's another example of what he's describing that we could do.
So does the city of Rossville need to work something out to be able to utilize our shelter?
Well, utilizing the shelter, we probably do need a better agreement there as well. But as far as transporting, dealing with animals that they have that are injured or sick, that need vet care, just like if they transport a prisoner to our jail that has medical issues, they are responsible for those medical expenses for that inmate.
Right.
So if they have an animal that has medical issues, they're responsible for that as well.
But what the situation here was, is the county has all the resources. The county could, I don't mean financial resources. Just like our shelter director just did, she could have reached out to rescues to take this dog. It's not costing you a penny. You have the resources, she has the resources. But the answer was just no. Even if she didn't physically take the dog, she holds all the cards to reach out to the rescues.
In that particular case, when first responders were on the scene, I reached out to the city mayor and had a conversation. And he said they would take care of it and he would make the phone call. So we backed out. So we need to move forward, time is up. Thank you.
Yeah.
Who would like to be next?
If you and I and the mayor can have a chat, that'd be a good thing.
Who would like to be next?
That was a great piece, by the way, I saw it this morning.
Thank you. Everybody work together.
I just kind of have a quick question that goes along with the courthouse.
Yeah, please state your name.
And I'm sure this has been addressed before.
Please state your name.
Oh, I'm Teresa Dorsey. So the splosh not passing on the last election?
The T-splosh.
T-splosh, okay. That's just transportation, okay. Not just transportation. But I was wondering, is that going to be on the ballot again? Like, how do you get that back on to?
Any jurisdiction that T-splosh fails on the ballot, that local jurisdiction has to wait a minimum of 12 months before the governing board could put it back on the ballot to be reconsidered by the voters.
Okay, so that is, that would have nothing to do with something like the courthouse?
No, the actual splosh did pass in November of 2020. And that's for a six-year cycle, so we're a year and a half into that.
Okay.
And so those allocations and funding is coming in for the infrastructure. The T-splosh is designated just for transportation improvements.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Good question, thank you. All right, anyone else? Okay, hearing none, we'll move forward on our agenda. Under new business, declaration of a joint reciprocal easement between Walker County, Georgia and Ten Foot Properties LLC. I ask our attorney to come up to the podium and to the microphones or make it here and see him for him to give everyone an overview for this action out of here to none.
Thank you. Board members and members of the public, I want to try to explain this in non-legal terms. Sometimes that's a challenge, but I think I can in this case. There is what is known as, let's see how it's referenced, Hinkle Town Center. And what that is, it is a tract of property that has been divided into several parcels. And one of the parcels is owned by Walker County and is used as a local fire station. One of the parcels is going to be used for a Dollar General. The other, I believe, three parcels that could be built on, nothing is on them right now. But, and this is typical when you get this size of a piece of property and then, in particular with the geography of this one, there is the need for a retention pond. So there is a retention pond on there, on this property. It's on one of the parcels. And the issue becomes, who is responsible for the maintenance of the retention pond? So what this agreement says, it's centered into between Walker County, because we own one of the parcels for our fire station, and Ten Foot Properties, because they own the remaining parcels. They're leasing one of these under a long-term to Dollar General, but they own these properties, the remainder properties. So what this agreement says is just putting it in writing and having it recorded at the courthouse so that the public is aware of it in the future and there's no confusion as to who's responsible for what. And this goes on in perpetuity, which means forever, now that this property is being developed. So on page two, it talks about maintenance of the agreements, a maintenance of the easement, which primarily is the retention pond area and the storm sewer lines leading to it. It says the county shall be responsible for performance of the maintenance. Such maintenance shall include removing trash and debris, landscaping, the maintenance of the drainage facilities at the stormwater detention pond. B says that the parcel owners shall share in the cost and expense of maintaining the easement. And so it's divided by percentage. So yes, the county is performing it, but it is being reimbursed for the vast majority of it by Ten Foot or as if these properties are sold off, whoever becomes owner of them. So that is the purpose of this agreement. And be happy to answer any questions. It's just to set forth who's responsible for it. You can't have a retention pond without somebody being responsible for maintaining it. And then you need to spell out, okay, who's going to pay for it? So that's it in a nutshell. Are there any particular questions? Honestly, the third page is a lot of, I won't say unnecessary, but it's rather standard boilerplate legal provisions that keeps it in existence forever. I think it's fortunate that we have this agreement in place. And I have reviewed it and from a legal perspective have approved it. Any questions?
I have one quick question. So I understand that we divide, it's divided out into shares, you know, that will be responsible for. And you said, of course, if Ten Foot property sells off, that responsibility goes to the new owner. On the long-term lease for the Dollar General, who will be responsible for collecting that percentage when this comes? Will Ten Foot be the one, since they actually own the property? Will they still be our, will they be writing the check? Or will we be chasing Dollar General for the check?
No, the Ten Foot assumes that in the calculation of these percentages, yes, sir.
Thank you.
Any questions?
No.
Okay, well, thank you.
Okay, there's no further questions for the attorney. Do we have a motion by the board to accept this agreement?
Yes, I'd love you to accept.
We have a motion by Commissioner Hart. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second, but Commissioner Stoltz, any further discussion of the board? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the agreement is approved by the board. Okay, we do have our monthly statistic data here on our spreadsheet. And we do have our normal breakout of our animal intake, adoptions, rescues, and euthanizations. But also additionally, in this packet, we have provided an additional spreadsheet that's a printout out of our system that gives more of a breakout of how the animals, where they're coming from, and intake wise, if it's a stray or a transfer, and how they out go and what the live animals, based off of age demographic and species. So it's just a little more detailed information to go with our animal data we're going to start providing. Our code enforcement in litter, month of June, 641 inspections in compliance. There was 31 citations, which could be anything from a warning citation or an actual fee citation to appear in court. Closed cases was seven. Roadside litter trash pickup was 5,260 pounds for the month. The election office reported there was 252 new registered voters in Walker County in the month of June. Fire department called, 495 services were called for the fire department to handle. Those are not all fires, those are liposys, medical accidents, different things that they're called out for. But 495 called for services. They installed 15 new smoke alarms, which is good. It gets us up to 114 smoke alarms being installed in the county this calendar year. Nights booked at Mount Cove Farm, 87. New home construction is still trending upward, even with the inflation. 17 new permits pulled for the month of June. That's coming off of 12 in the month of May. It gets us 87 for the year. Our, we added 53 new followers to our Facebook page and 34 new subscribers to our newsletter. And we had 2,304 transit trips, which is a good strong number of transits being utilized. And we still. And we still offer our Saturday service as well. And that's just some of the highlights from that report. At this time on our agenda, we have our time for our commissioner comments. So we'll start with Commissioner Blake.
I just appreciate everybody coming out and being involved in your government. If I can help in any way, please call, text, or email, thank you.
I, I'll piggyback off of Robert, as, as always, uh, we appreciate your, we do appreciate any, uh, participation, uh, and, and people that, uh, get up and say what's on their mind or give us information or help us, it does help us do our job. So, uh, just continue to, to be involved and continue to show up.
Mr. Hart?
Yes, I would like to mention that, uh, you know, the high-speed internet with Windstream is coming. Uh, I get a lot of questions about that, because where I live, people are looking forward to that. But today, they were out surveying on the road, some guys were out stopping to ask them about it, it was actually contractors for Windstream, so they're gearing up to do that. I asked them when's it going to be ready, they wouldn't tell me. I told them I was going to mention it tonight, but they wouldn't, they wouldn't divulge that. But they are working on it, so that's, that's good, a lot of people ask me about that. The second thing I want to mention is kind of shout out to our safety committee and also our supervisor with the county. I asked Mr. David Brown, who's on that safety committee a couple of days ago, how many heat-related injuries we had had this year. His answer was none, so that's, 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 that's very good. That tells us that our supervisor are doing a good job out there with that. You know, I work outside all the time, so I know how tough it is. Uh, so shout out to not only our safety committee, but also our supervisors out there, working those people in these extreme conditions. We did get some of that grant money, we spent on some items for that, super excited about that and glad it's working. Robert?
Thank you, sir. So, uh, just a couple of, uh, comments, I do appreciate everyone coming tonight. Thank you for being involved in your government. Uh, the Centerpost Community Center is going to have a free music night this Saturday at 7:00. Those are always great events. Uh, also, Dodory Gap is now open, as well as the upper end of West Cove. So I want to thank, uh, our road department guys, Carlin and Bobby, they did a great job in facilitating and doing oversight on that. Um, Mr. Chairman, I would like to yield part of my commissioner comments to David Brown, if he, hate to put him on the spot, but if he'll give us a little bit of an update on some of the purchases, potential purchases of the grant money. And, uh, thank you, sir, for coming up.
So far, what we have spent... I got handouts.
Would there be a chance?
You can see the items that we bought. Um, they include coolers, uh, squincher drinks. Uh, as of today, we've spent $6,186 just on safety stuff for different departments. We bought the, uh, cool wraps that we give in the, uh, road department, the maintenance shop, landfill, uh, animal shelter will be getting theirs, hopefully tomorrow. Um, we got, uh, the, um, we got almost $3,000 worth of new LED lights for the shop.
What's our, what's our priority, uh, where we're at, we're kind of prioritizing from the safety committee standpoint on the, on the next, uh, items?
We're looking at the, uh, imagers for the, um, sheriff's department. Uh, quite expensive, with sheriff's department, it's a total of the, almost $51,000. But as Chairman Whitfield stated before, some of those are 20 years plus old. They don't, half of them don't even work. And these would come in, and then after that, we're, there's, uh, two for the fire department that actually show heat images. If there's a person in a building, it will show where they are. So those are our next two priorities, just the sheriff's department and...
What's the cost on the dollar?
For the fire department, it'll be about $5,000. So we're looking at about, about $56,000 between those two. And then for EMS, we're actually looking at a product that I got from our ACCG. It's called Bender Lifts. Um, what it is, we're, we've had a couple of injuries from the fire department picking people out of the floor, getting them on a stretcher. Now, Bender Lift is a company that I talked to the fire chief in the city of Wynder. And this is what they have on their rescue trucks. Giving someone a tuck, something like a clothes dryer in the bathroom or anywhere like that. That goes around them, and it's actually got anywhere from 24 to 32 straps that you can pick up, two people can pick up, a 400-pound person. A lot of these could, as you know, Commissioner Stoltz, the old, the old sheet doesn't work and under the arms dislocation, uh, that, we're looking at that for the fire department, the rescue. We have seven QRVs and we got a quote from Bender Lift for seven, um, lifts. Five standard and two variatic.
Do we, what's our, what's our timeframe, uh, Mr. Chairman, on moving forward with these requests that seem to be pretty high-level far as with our sheriff's department and our emergency services? Do we, do we need to make an allocation or appropriate funding for that? Or do we want to move, or are we going to move it forward with your spending limit? How do you, how are we going to handle that?
Well, they've been moving forward most everything on this list because we had that funding that we got from ACCG.
Right, right.
And so, uh, I know David had mentioned these Bender lifts to me the other day, but I, the first I had seen the quote, but, uh, what I've asked them to do is when they get these things like this, if the safety committee is in favor of doing it and the funding's there, then it just gets processed.
So just basically ask for a PO and get them a PO? We could do that pretty much. As far as on those imaging, I know the imaging's one of the things that's outdated that we need to, we need to move on, so we're ready to issue a PO, I guess.
Well, and that, that's a, that's a good thing, because if we're looking at a, a purchase over $25,000, then technically this board would need to approve that, because that's a capital purchase.
Right.
Uh, we would need to get the purchase order and get that on the agenda for that large item. But these smaller things like this quote here, you know, what, $5,000, $6,000 total, under $6,000? So that's within the spending, uh, guidelines on that. But those imagers, we would need to do a purchase order pending the board approval process.
We'll start in the morning. Well, I was going to say, I was, I was going to ask you, charge you with having that for us at the next meeting, please. Uh, and, and do you want him to include these in that for us to approve?
He wouldn't have to.
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm just asking, do you want us to do that? Or do you want to go ahead and issue that PO on that?
No, it's, it's not necessary.
It's two weeks out, so I'm just saying, we'd like to move on those.
Now, the safety committees, are y'all ready to move forward with this?
We're going to use... We'd like to put that under the, uh, ACC.
The grant?
Yes.
The other, the other grant?
It's the 6,000, not the 107. We actually have two.
Okay, so...
And that would fall under, I talked to Steve Shields today, and he's very much for this.
Yes.
And that, so that's a $6,000 grant, so that would just about cap that thing, that one out?
Yes, sir, we were going to do some replacements on our Zoals and Cardiac Science AED machines. We've got some pads that are going to expire in September.
Okay.
And that's what we were looking at to finish the 6,000 with the 57.
Because they want us to use it all.
Sure, well, they want, we, we're putting in it for right at $13,000. They say double what, in case there's any extra money.
Right.
Where you don't cut off at six. If they can give us $7,000, then we, we, we've got something to buy.
Well, if we actually, if they didn't and we needed more, we've still got that balance of the hundred-something thousand that we could roll some over. So yeah, that's just, I just wanted to make it clear if we needed to include that or...
We, we are ready to, on our next step.
So y'all, your next step is turning to Steve?
Well, our next step is to process the POs to hopefully get them.
For the sheriffs.
Yeah, the imaging for the sheriffs.
I thought we were talking about this.
We're talking about all of it.
We'll have that filled, the grant application filled out, and then we'll need you to sign it, so we can turn, it's due by July 31st.
Yes.
Just to them, to, for them to approve the grant.
Now, the $6,000 grant, that is, we spend it, they reimburse us back.
But we have the 6,000 already?
It's appropriated by ACCG, we just got to handle the paperwork approval process.
We send them the receipts showing we've purchased.
So my que, I guess, to simplify my question is, if we know we're going to get the money and it's a process, and our firefighters need, I, I know for, I, I know firsthand the, the problem with lifting and stuff, if they need them, I'm just asking, is it something that we would want to put on this initial request that they're going to bring to us in two weeks? While the paperwork's processing, or, and get them, get them in the hands and get them in the field, anticipating it's coming, because even if we don't get that grant, I think that's a $6,000 expenditure that we just about have to do for our emergency services. So I'm just kind of trying to...
Yeah, all that would do is, would be delay it two weeks. So since this safety money is under $25,000, they can, Becky can get it processed, bring me the document to sign, she emails it to Steve for approval, and then, you know, the, the order's underway.
So we, so we...
So what's the time of delivery, they stayed on these, what's the estimate?
They can have it to us in less than a week.
About a week, okay.
Okay, so we could, so basically we can take care of all of it within, within a two-week timeframe?
Well, th, th, this would take, drop tomorrow, I would assume, and then the $56,000...
It would come to us, it would come to us in two weeks and we'll deal with that then?
Correct.
Okay, all right, I, you got me clear. I just needed, I wanted to understand, because I know they're important and I know that those emergency services, both the sheriff's department and the fire department, are looking anxiously to get these on board. So we've got the funding, I just want to make sure we got it, cut it down. Thank you.
David, just one more, a couple more quick questions. So I know you and I had discussed about the ham radio tower, looking at that possibly as, you know, being included in, in this, any more information on that?
I talked to Mr. Carter Lundy.
Okay.
And what he's doing, he's compiling, compiling a list of how he wants to do it.
Okay.
And he's talking about the Cedar Grove.
Yes.
And Villanow community that put ham radios. And, um, that way, when the service goes out, there'll be people there that can man them. Let, eh, take some of the load off 911 in an emergency. And he's putting together how he wants to do it, as far as where he wants to attach the antenna on the building. It won't be something that's in the building on, they'll have the antenna, they'll have wire coming through, and they'll have it in a bucket where they can move it. They'll have a, a portable desk.
Right, so when they have a mobile command center, basically, it's on there.
You can have that, and then, um...
But it's the infrastructure for them to plug in their radios?
Yes.
That they would have, that they may take?
And I, we're checking on, to make sure, I notice, but making sure that our insurance will allow that, which I don't see why they wouldn't, but we're checking on that before we commit to letting them do that in a county building. And they've already looked at Cedar Grove, it's going to be on the, up on the second floor, where all the air conditioner and heating units are. Nobody will be around it, Villanow will be the same way. They've already spotted a place in the, um, service upstairs.
And while they're doing that, do we, are we looking at a, do we have, so we're talking about two remote facilities, do we have, are we thinking about doing anything in the, the central 911 area facility because of the, the, you know, ham radios are, are, are able to work when nothing else, you know? They can work off of a battery pack and talk around the world. So I'm curious if, if we're going to have them in remote locations for emergencies, God forbid, but you know, a sure enough emergency, would we not need to have a central station to communicate to our, to our, our central location?
He'll have that, he'll have that in the quote, as far as how he wants to handle that.
Well, I, I'd just like to ask that question, if you don't mind, just to see if he feels like it's necessary, just so we can close that loop of communication.
My understanding is, is we've got an antenna at the 911 center, and I know before, when we have stood up the, the emergency management command center, a lot of time a ham radio operator will come to the 911 center and station there to communicate with their team.
You'll do.
So they're, they're very organized, they're, they've got it together.
One last thing, I spoke with Mr. Wood before the meeting. Um, I know we don't have a lot of snow and ice events here, but when we do have an ice event, uh, it's pretty dangerous for our first responders, our road department, to be walking on ice. But, um, I would like to look at maybe getting some crimp-ons to walk on ice. Uh, they're very inexpensive, I've got several pair, I'm going to get you some names and we can kind of look, but I think you could probably get a pair for under $10.
Maybe include the sheriff's department too, because they allow, some of their trucks carry chainsaws.
Yeah.
And we've had several injuries in the sheriff's department.
Trips.
Tricking, yes.
Or slips, slips.
Yes. So, Bullitt, if you'll give me your name, we'll get Bullitt into it.
I'll do it, thank you, sir, thank you.
Yeah, very good. Uh, also, just to spring off of what Commissioner Stoltz mentioned, we do have Dodory Gap Road open and also West Cove Roads open all the way through. They have put down the initial, uh, base of asphalt, but they will be coming back and repaving, or finishing the paving project we started last year from Highway 193 all the way down West Cove, all the way to Dodory Gap, all the way to the top of the mountain, all the way to Highway 157. So that would finish out that, and then they'll stripe it and put reflectors and all down. So that's the next phase. Since the construction part's done, now it's time to put the final layer of asphalt and striping reflectors on, so that is forthcoming. Also, Brian mentioned about Windstream. I also had a conversation with our main contact there today, and we will be coordinating, Joe Leguee will be working on this, that, we probably will wait and do it after school starts back. And we will have a community informational meeting for people to come to, to learn more about that, be able to identify the exact locations of where the new fiber internet will go. Because the grant that we received with Windstream's help is to serve the communities that have no service or very, very limited, you know, low bandwidth service. So that's why, as you mentioned, there's over in the Villanow community today. I mean, we've got people in Villanow, I understand from people I've talked to personally, that are still using dial-up phone modems just to have any type of internet. So many of those citizens there are going to go from dial-up or nothing at all, straight to fiber. So it's going to be phenomenal. And as you indicate, we've already had several other reports from different parts of the community, including up on Lookout Mountain of areas that, uh, that they're building out now to handle the unserved and underserved parts of our community. And if I remember correctly, based off of their analysis, I think it was around 74% or so of our unserved or underserved county is going to have access to fiber to the home. So that's, that's tremendous for us, but it takes time, so we just need everybody to be patient. We, we do get calls asking, well, what roads, what addresses? If I had that information, I'd give it to you, but I don't know. But, uh, they've got that data and they will be coming. And then they will, uh, have customer service people that will come to the meeting and they'll start, uh, pre-subscribing people. So that way they get people that are interested, get their name and information, address, phone numbers, and so when the circuit becomes hot and available, they'll notify those residents immediately to finish the signup process and get them activated. So they, uh, very organized, they, uh, are working with 17 other counties in the state of Georgia. So they've got their process pretty, pretty well laid out, and they are moving forward because they want to get activated and get the service going. So that is forthcoming in our rural communities in Walker County. Okay, uh, we do have a need for an executive session, so I need to make the motion that we go into executive session for personnel and real estate. A second. All right, so we have a motion by the chairman, a second. My commissioner asks you, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, we will adjourn and be back after our executive session. Okay, it is, uh, 10:03 PM, July 14th, 2022. We just come out of our executive session, there's no action items of the board at this time. So do we have a motion to officially close out our meeting tonight?
Motion to adjourn.
All right, we've got a motion by Commissioner Blake Moore, do we have a second?
Second.
Second, by Commissioner Stoltz, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, we stand adjourned, gentlemen, thank you very much.